Good evening, good evening and welcome to fellow councillors and members of the public who are present this evening. It's nice to see some representation from the public. Okay, so we'll make a start. Meeting of Oakham Town Council, it's Wednesday, the 14th of January, 7pm. And I'll start the evening by concluding the apologies for this evening's meeting. We have received one apology and that is from Rob Guthrie, who has an on-scanning connect with us. So I'll put a couple of the answers here. How much did you want?
Five.
That's a nice one.
Okay, so we see the apologies here. All those in favour? Smart practice. There's this. You do it. Right, of course, I just need this to remember. Okay, so my current members to declare, if quite any discloseable peculiary interest, they may have respect of any items on the agenda and any interest there may have been in respect of the parties. Any declarations? No? Okay, good, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move on to the minutes. Just before we take post of the minutes, Alison has pointed out to me there are a couple of typos within these. One is regarding the Oakham Cemetery. It's the recording of the votes. The actual numbers are accurate, however, they're not in the order that they should have been printed. So the extension should have come after the gates. It's just a protocol that that's just not been followed appropriately. But the numbers are correct. And in the street naming section, where it says Spinning Hill Rise, it should say Spinning Rise. Alison has checked with Rookland County Council and comments sent from us to them is accurate, but there's just an error on the minutes. Has anybody else got anything else they wish to raise in relation to the minutes? No? The post-up for that, Septus Spurst, and September, all those in favour? I will initial those errors and Alison will mention the one that goes on the website is... Is it this one we need to sign over here?
I know that one. Yes, we need to sign this as well.
One on the bottom page. Thank you very much. Okay, so that takes us to councillors' questions. We haven't had any notification of any questions to be brought forward. Okay, Chairwoman's and Members' report. Have to say, like for me, as far as chairmanship has been concerned, us being very quiet over the Christmas and New Year period. Obviously, I attended lots of council services. I think I had a week when I went to one, which were all very nice, I have to say. I was made welcome at the moment. But I've had no further invites from any local associations. So we must have been fairly quiet from that point of view. I understand you have a report around the commemoration committee.
Yeah, I think we feel 2019. Every year, this committee is having events for the commemoration of the Great War. So I attended the meeting yesterday afternoon and there was a couple of things that came out of it. And one of the things that came out of it was to do with the freedom of entry. So I'm going to save the bulk of that comment when we get to that point on the agenda. But in a nutshell, each year, there's a plan to have a church service in all the counties, in all the towns across the country. And Rookland obviously and Oakham is going to be no different to that. And the bit that we included when I go on later on is to say that the church service is going to be a combination, hopefully with the freedom of entry. One of the topics that came up was a memorial plaque for George Phillips. Currently, there's a plaque on a house in Oakham, Church Passage area, and there are plans to have that revamped. And I'm actually going to be bringing that back to the town council as an agenda item, a separate agenda item, as the town council have been asked to be involved. But that would be under another agenda item on a different day. Looking at the other things that are discussed, the museum exhibitions that are going to be doing in relation to the commemoration is that 2014 is the 100th anniversary, and I know you've heard me say before, of the Battle of Friesenberg with the Leicestershire Yeomanry. And the museum are doing an exhibition between May the 8th and June the 13th, which is around the period of that commemoration specifically. And that will be in 2015. And then from 5th of September to mid-January 2016, the theme of the exhibition at the museum will be called On All the Fronts. And it's to cover the Home Front, if you like, the Home Guard, you know, there wasn't strictly a Home Guard, it had a different name, and the Women on Land, or people did at home, that sort of thing. So that would be the other thing. One of the other items that came out of this meeting yesterday was there's going to be, as ordinarily, a poppy concert each year. Actually, they had it at Uppingham, in the Uppingham School, which was really good, really well-attended. They're looking at this year, when they do the poppy concert, which is from the British Museum, obviously, is it's more than likely to be at the Rookland County Museum and it's going to be a low-key affair because they can't sort of follow the big one that was on last year. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that brings us to item seven, which is Deputations by the Public. Oh, Baker Park, there is no Park report, no assistance in the Park this evening. Deputations by the Public. Can I ask which any members of the public wish to make a deputation sweep this evening? Is it just Mr. Forbes?
Can I just first point out item number three, the minutes. You admitted a very thoughtful addition to the meeting of councillor Lucas regarding the tragic incident at Oakham School. And I do hope that Oakham Town Council did follow up the suggestion of Mrs. Lucas. And it's a pity that you hadn't minuted it, that you've given a construal amount of time to the resignation of a councillor. Then I'll move on to item number eight, the fitness centre. I can't understand why on your report you still have the option for demolition. You have a property which you say is valued at £200,000 and in my opinion, that would be a disgrace if it was demolished. Also in the report, there's what I consider to be a rhyme that is tending to put off people, is the idea that if this council moved its offices into the building, it would cost £50,000. Are you intending, where did the quote come from? Are you intending to create a palace? You know, I moved to Oakham and I completely stripped and revamped a two-bedroom property and that came to £24,000 with some excessive expenditure on luxury items. My suggestion to the council is that you do move into it because you're due a rent review, I understand, this year. £50,000 is not even five years' rent at your current amount. There should be a community hub, stroke council office there, for the benefit of the people in Oakham. If it does cost you £50,000 to achieve, it's money well spent because the people are not benefiting from what you're paying here. You could get grants from the lottery, European Union, and even extend the property to make it a much beneficial space for combining council and community. Anyway, I won't go on, I just thought that was the point I wanted to make. And then there's one last final point on the budget. This is not from me, this came via Twitter. And I don't know whether it's correct, but the council might like to look into it. You're proposing a 2.2% pay rise for staff, possibly. I was told on Twitter after somebody read that that central government had capped local or government employees to 1%, so you might have to look into that to see whether that is an issue or not. But thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. This does in fact bring us on to item number eight, which is the fitness centre, which the report has been prepared by councillor Swinton Stubbs, I believe. I suppose you'd like to take us through that, please?
As councillors know, the presently seats of the fitness centre wish to leave at the end of January. And therefore, we need to look at what we wish to do with the fitness centre. The four options you've got there are the options which are available to us. Not many of them we want to take up, but imagine the building is an option. Not that we want to go ahead with that, but it is an option. Re-look at the offices from Victoria Hall to the building is another option. That we consider to be a negative approach because the council offices need to really be in the central of the town. If we move a mile out of town, you're not going to get very much, very many people coming in. And also, we're hoping in the near future, as you know, to attempt to have the tourist information centre here. Now, it'd be difficult to have a tourist information centre at Princess Avenue. So those are the reasons why we recommend that. The other one is selling the building, which is an option. And you see from that, it could realise something in the region of £200,000 on the open market. Councillor Stubbs and I would recommend that you look at option D, which is to continue to lease the building or to offer it as a community centre. There's two people interested. One wants to run a nursery there and is quite prepared to pay the rent which we've asked, but wants an additional area of land at the back and also at the front for car parking. The other person wishes to run a community centre and wishes it to be a rent-free option. The idea was that the prospective tenant would like to run the managing talks and knitting matter groups during the day and running evening sessions, including after-school homework classes. She's a very capable person and I wouldn't take her views to be inappropriate on that. But it's up to the members to decide whether they wish to continue to lease the building or to offer it as a rent-free community centre. We make no recommendation, although we do recommend option D, we make no recommendation on either person. It'll be up to councillors to decide.
Okay, up for discussion.
Thank you, Chairman. I've been allowed the years to speak last and listen to people, but I think on this occasion, it helps the council if I speak first because I'm going to recommend a different option. It may be helpful to either agree to that or to set it aside and then look at the others and move forward from there. So I think it helps if I do it this way around. Normally, our tone is not to be critical of reports and to try to be positive. And I should try to do that. And please believe me, there's no personal comments intended if I do criticise the report. I think it's perhaps regrettable that when the working party was set up, I wasn't here and various people might not have been here. It might have been helpful if a couple of people who thought it might be a good idea to lose the council there were on it. And a couple of people who thought it wasn't a good idea to move there. I'm not saying that it didn't roll on, it didn't roll on the report, but I think it would have been more helpful. Addressing it as we go through it, I'm not entirely sure of the comment about the loss of rental income. I think we have to accept that we generally meet in the evenings, we occasionally meet during the day. And if we did have an office and community use, then certainly that hall could be renting out quite a lot during the day, during the week and that weekend. So I'm not entirely sure that loss of rental income is a strong argument. I'm also not entirely sure about this £50,000 estimate. But I think perhaps if we had had different authors, we might have looked at that in more detail instead of just setting aside this option quite so quickly. I have no idea where the figure comes from. I know a huge amount was spent on it in recent years and I'm surprised that that figure is there. A member of the public actually made some positive comments about why we should move there and I tend to agree with them. The report talks about the centre of the town. And I asked the question, why? How many people come here? How many people know we exist? Not a lot. A lot of people know the council doesn't exist at all. And if you went in the street, in the high street, I bet if you went outside the Victoria Hall and stopped and blasted Walton Bar, where's Oakham Town Council? They wouldn't have a clue, most of them. You say it's nearly a mile outside of the town. I think that's an insult to the people who live in that ward. You talk about tourist information centre. Five years ago, we were talking about that when I was a councillor before. Rookland County Council has a budget of about £35 million. We can't run one. We just have a part-time one. What are we spending on the castle? Is it £2.7 million or something like that? So what we're proposing to do here, use this room, push some chairs into a corner, have some second-hand stands and a few leaflets. That isn't what people want. I'm sorry. If we have to do that, if we go down that route, it's the best that we can do. We're all volunteers. You guys have all done more than me because you've been doing it for years and I haven't. But I just don't think it would cut the mustard in the end. Ignoring that even, if we keep this place, five years ago, we had a representative for the monitoring officer at the higher authority in here who judged this room as unfit for purpose. I see no change to that, it still is. Nobody knows we're here. There's difficulty of access, no parking within ease, difficulty of disabled access. I believe we're supposed to have put a bell on the side door, I don't know if it's happened yet. I don't know who answered it, if anyone reads the bell, I don't know if anyone knows the bell is there. And even if it is there, and the car's parked there, the disabled person can't get in. What are we going to do in May if someone disabled and confined to a wheelchair is elected? How are we going to get in and out of the system right now? It's a very, very grand building. And I understand the desire to have a council in this building, but we don't own it. It offers no value to our residents to rent it. It's just a box within a very grand building. So that's a negative sign, I'm sorry, but it just happens to come out. And some of you have heard me say some of those points before. But what I imagine is something different. Bizarrely, a member of the public has used exactly the same terms, I think. I can see the sign on it. Oakham Town Council and Community Centre. And what a fabulous asset that could be for the town. Parking, we say all that access, a large space, part of it set aside as an office, use for community groups when they're not using it. Could be social groups, could be youth, it could be children, it could be charities, it could be anybody. We could rent it out for nominal amounts and do that as a community service or we could charge commercial rates. We could use the money that we gather and say, well, we'll put that into a pond, into a cot. Disabled children float and we'll take them to the seaside once a year. Imagine doing that kind of thing for the people of Oakham. Instead of coming into here, closing the doors, then there's another door, then there's another door, then there's three steps, nobody knows we're here. So I think moving there would add value. Add value to the town, it would be brilliant for Oakham Town Council. I know, I say, I had a preset, you're all under voluntary, well, I'm sorry, it's not you, it's the Town Council, but most of you have done much more work than me. Good work, I think we could do great work, I think we could do fantastic work and we could be a brilliant asset for this town, even more than we are now. And now is the time. Because they want to move out Princess Avenue and our leases come in up here. It's not a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, but it's probably quite rare for it to all come up and come together at just this time. So it's up to you guys what you decide. But if you don't mind, Chairman, I'd like to propose that now. And still getting into the debate, of course, assuming one second is it, perhaps no one will. So we can either say, yes, that's a brilliant idea, we're not afraid, we're not going to hide it, we're going to really go for it, do something fantastic, or not. And just break it out and we're sitting here and I'm against it. So, with your permission, I'd like to make a proposal at this stage.
I totally get where you're coming from. And I think it would be prudent really at this point to part that proposal and just give other people a chance to join the debate.
I'm happy to do that, Chairman. And then using about four or five options, it's such a big one, you're either with it or against it.
What was the proposal that the council wanted?
It would be in three stages. The main one would be to approve more moving-forward option B, to regulate Oakham Town Council's Princess Avenue, subject to building regulations and planning and potential sources of funding. And if people aren't, that's a carry-on, you vote. If people aren't happy with that, you vote it down and then you choose which presumably the tenants to move it.
Does anybody want to second this vote at this stage?
Chairman, I would second that proposal.
Are we having a debate or not? We are, I do want us to have a debate.
I'm just saying, I would, but I'm leaving it open for people to now debate what the council officers said.
So should we go with that debate, yeah, that proposal, those that are on the table? Dors, do you want to comment?
On what?
On the report or on what Alan has?
I was just going along with the lines of that one.
Okay.
Is that all right? Right. Please bear with me and if I shout, let me know because I've just taken all this out. We had a survey done, how many visitors, perhaps you didn't know this, Alan, and how many visitors we had. And it was very few that came to this building. I actually agree with all that Alan has said. But I would like to add a bit more. It's supposed to be wheelchair accessible. I have been, I've heard some people upstairs now, but I have been here several days since I've read this report and it hasn't been wheelchair accessible here because the gate was closed. The gate was closed at 10 to 7 and locked tonight. I hope it's now open, otherwise we are in breach of fire regulations. We've had no visitors. Down at Princess Avenue, let me just say, first of all, we are a parish council. Like all the parish councils, we are a parish council. When, I'm sorry to heart back, but when I came to the first meeting here, councillor Swiftin was sitting right where I was, here, and he said, what do you think, Joyce? That was nine years ago. And I said, too small. And it is too small. We have nowhere to store anything. The reception area, sorry Alison, it's not your fault. The reception area is a mess because we're storing all sorts of things there. We're not professional. Down at Princess Avenue, we could have storage, we could have free parking, it would be on a bus route. And it would be wheelchair accessible. I'd suggest, along similar lines from councillor Walters, but I also think the TIC needs to be redressed. The castle will close in April for about 18 months, so everybody has to go down to the museum if they want to get any information. If we move from here down to Princess Avenue, then between Oakham Town Council and Oakham Town Partnership, we could open this as a tourist information centre. Probably not every day of the week, Monday and Wednesday. Volunteers Saturday and Sunday if we have to. But I think this is ideally set for tourist information centre only. So that redresses the tourist information part. I can see no reason, and I think it's a fantastic vision that councillor Walters has come up with because it is a vision for the future. It's not being here, having new furniture and hoping that we can get in a lot more people. It's about a vision. We've had this vision actually longer than five years. We came to be here because, I have said it before, across there, we had an amputee that couldn't get up the stairs. It could well happen again. But I really do think we've got to look, not for next year or whenever. We've got to have this vision for a long-term future. And once we get there, we don't have to move. Now, if you're thinking, as it has been said to me, that this could stay as a tourist information and we take hold of that room, then we've got twice the expense. I just think that you've got to have the vision, go along with it and let's get on with the job. Thank you, Chairman.
Anybody else which is to make comments?
The, I mean, I would, I would have that, as Alan would have said before my earlier comment anyway. I was torn between us staying here and then leasing the building. And if we were going to do any other option, it would have been that we'd have to get money out of that facility. And as I listened to Alan's comments, you could actually have OTC moved, saving £9,000 a year in theory, which would pay out the rent for what amounts to a shoebox, and still have this community centre thing. And the comment about us not being in the centre of town, well, the centre of town is moving all the time. I know this is the High Street and it's invariably people like town councils on the High Street. But the, you know, the Barney Thought complex, everything is moving in that direction. I'm not saying we should move there and go with it. At the end of the day, wherever we're centred, it's what we do in the town that matters. It doesn't matter where we operate from, in actual fact, it's what we do for the people. And a lot of the things that we tend to focus on, and every time we do some, we're always doing the main part of our mayor cuts close. And we seem to neglect Royces, for instance. We seem to neglect the other side of the gravel track. And I think we need to start opening our doors and our services to everybody and combining the occupation up there of OTC and then during the day, part of that building could be used for community groups. It is a win-win situation. The expenditure costs, I was wondering whether they'd come through from myself. And, yeah, I'll just accept what Joyce and Alan said. And if there's no other comments, then I'll move to second motion.
So, sorry, Alan, is that, as you are the authors of this report, is there anything you wish to add?
Can I just, can I just dispute one particular thing? One item that's been mentioned, that we get very few visitors here. In the area where I was on parish council down south, there were 22 parish councils in that area. And we used to meet from time to time. 22 parish councils say they never get anybody to turn up at their meetings. It is not unusual. So I don't think that is part of the reason. I personally feel I wouldn't give this option. I don't agree with the motion that's been brought forward. It's one thing that I feel we ought to really look at and debate the option of the nursery. Because the one thing that wasn't mentioned, that Alvin mentioned, was that not only would she be prepared to pay the full rental, but she would want an option of possibly purchasing the building. Now, that's quite a consideration because it would take it off of our hands. So I think, you know, this is something which needs to be more seriously considered. I can see so many things against moving the town council out of town. If we're going to get members to, members of the public to come to and visit the town council, it's up to us to try and promote it. They're more likely to come... They're more likely to come here to the town centre than to go out to where the fitness centre is now.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just, one thing? I didn't mean that we were talking about visitors, I wasn't talking about members of the public coming to our meetings, I'm talking about visitors who actually visit and ask questions. The thing is, when anybody comes to the town council here, and it was noticed when I was dealing at Christmas with a gentleman that had come from Nottingham, they have to pay in the car park. It's visitors who, it's people who put lights up and need to ask questions, do Christmas lights, bunting or ask questions, they've all got to come here and pay for parking. That's what I mean about visitors, and that's what the survey brought up, that nobody actually came here. It's not, we're not talking about council meetings, we are talking about visitors to the council. And quite frankly, I can't understand the argument.
I want to particularly point to what Joyce said. Alan mentioned members of the public not coming to our council meetings. That's what I was referring to.
Okay, well, I mean, just so that would be my personal opinion, and then I will let you speak again. Listen, I mean, my vision for the council, as people are probably aware, is that in an ideal situation, it would be nice to have something very visual on the high street that people could see, a shop with double fronts, so that you could do all the things that we're talking about. Actually, within the town, we're open and very visual, and that would perhaps prevent more people visiting. However, you know, the arguments tonight have been very persuasive, and I can see, I can see that, I can definitely see the benefits of using that property that we already own as a joint sort of council stroke community centre. We'd need to be very clear about how we manage the community centre side of it, I think, and that would be, if that is the way that people go, then obviously there's lots of debate to be had about how that's managed, who manages it, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not just a straightforward choice. I also agree that fifty, I don't know where the £50,000 comes from, it was a ballpark figure that was given to us, and we would need a complete breakdown of what that £50,000 meant. I understand there is some asbestos issues, but I don't know whether they were dealt with when it was converted to the fitness centre. There was a lot of things that we needed to take into consideration. Adam, you wanted to say something?
Well, I know there's this thing about numbers and visitors and then, as Sam was right, you know, it was a reference made to the amount of members of the public that attend meetings. As I recall, when we do get members of the public turn up, and the biggest issue was the lights at the tennis courts, and there wasn't so much standing room, it was almost standing on shoulders room only in there. So if we are, if we do promote ourselves and people are aware where, aware of where we are, and we do start getting more people coming to council meetings, even to give the example of when we have our AGM, we have to move into the gallery because we can't get in here. The evidence speaks for itself almost, so, you know, if there's no further comments, I'm now happy to confirm, I am prepared to second the proposal.
Okay, sure to make note of it. Yes, sorry.
Just listening to all the others there. And I think one thing you've got to ask yourself is, why don't people come here? What do we do to attract them to this building? What different are we going to do to attract them to a building, say, at Princess Avenue? So it's not all moving building is not going to help totally, we've got to put ourselves across in a different way, we've got to be more expressive. So it's not just moving from here to Princess Avenue, it's what are we going to do differently which will attract people to come? And that's something you've got to ask yourself. If we carry on the same way, it'll be no different, we'd have the extra expense of moving to Princess Avenue. I can answer that. Good. I can answer that in Alan's words. What we'd be doing differently is that if it becomes a town council stroke community centre stroke community hub, people will be coming there for that reason alone. So the council will be getting exposure that it currently doesn't get because people don't come here to play ball games or do whatever they're going to do or not do in this room. So in actual fact, by moving there and having a larger facility and making it accessible for the public to use for each hour that is appropriate during the day, we're actually exposing ourselves and people will then go, "The town council do this, they've got a community hub and an office," going as they say. So in actual fact, we're automatically promoting ourselves just by moving there. We're giving that exposure to the public because we're inviting them into our office.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry, did you all, in this debate to a close?
Can I just say one more thing? At one night shopping, how many people came in here and said, "I've not been in here before"? No, I'm sorry, but if we did have an issue like pay parking or like we had with the floodlights, we wouldn't be able to get them in anyway. How many chairs have we got? That's all we've got. We haven't got the room to get the people in anyway. Sorry, there's no debate, is what I can say.
Alan, because I can't remember all the words of your proposal, would you like to stand up and read it out again, please?
Thank you, Chairman. If I could just say, I think Joyce just answered Alan's point. To certainly say, I know whilst we looked at encouraging people to come in because we can't comment, but if Adam would be amenable to it, I'll read out the full proposal I wrote down, which is in three parts, and you can either second it or not.
Three parts.
To approve moving forward with option B, to relocate OTC to Princess Avenue. I'm just watching.
You've got it written down, you can.
I can, yeah.
That's all you really have.
Yeah. Subject to building regulations and planning and potential sources of funding. Part two, that if necessary, the lease of this room at the Victoria Hall is extended on a month-by-month basis only, if possible. And thirdly, that a working party is established to progress this decision.
I think we've got quite a lot of things.
And isn't there one I have, if you want?
Um, what did you want to say?
Let me just go back to the present. Just to correct that, we have a lease here, and the only time we can relinquish that lease and give notice is in October, to release, to give notice for the following April. So if we can only move from here on the, by the first of April, we have to give notice six months in advance. That really, either we do that or we pay the rent which accrues over that period. Also, while you're talking about this, you must think that the people who are already in the fitness centre, they wish to move out at the end of January, are we going to allow them to move out or do we want them to continue to pay the rent until July? What sort of timescale have you got there if we're going to consider moving there? What sort of timescale have you got for move up there? There's going to be some work done in that fitness centre. You just can't move in and just start a council up there. There's a considerable amount of work to be done. So you've got to think of all those things. If you're going to, if you're going to agree to this, think of those things and how are you going to handle it?
That is exactly why I entered part three, which will now be part two, is that a working party is established to progress this decision. And my understanding is that the lease can come down at any time.
I think there is clearly a lot of work in relation to this, it's not a simple decision. I think the decision to be made this evening is whether, in principle, people wish to transfer the town council and offices to what is currently in the fitness centre. Yes, there is lots of work to do in terms of timescales, costings. If that, if people choose to go that way, then, you know, we can't look at everything as a barrier to our doing that. But at the same time, we have to be very mindful of timing and issues. I'm not absolutely sure about the, are you saying we wouldn't be able to, they can't rent the building? So we would need to understand, completely understand the costings in relation to that.
I have a suggestion, then. If we have to pay up till March 2016, if we relocate and we go up there, we can use this as a tourist information centre and see how it goes.
While the council is closed, that is.
That's what I meant, yes.
Then go.
If this is empty.
Two, Chairman.
Okay, so the proposal is, have we got all those three proposals now, because you moved them around a bit, so I just need to be absolutely sure that people know exactly what they're waiting for.
Forgive me, Chairman, I seem to, Mr. Joyce's advice. So I will pass this over. Part one, to approve moving forward with option B, to relocate Open Town Councils to Princess Avenue, subject to building regulations, planning and potential sources of funding. And two, that a working party is established to progress this decision.
I think, sorry, I think one of the key issues is in terms of timescales, is that we do have to let the fitness centre know when it's going to go. But we need to let them know that fairly soon because obviously they're looking to move down.
But, Chair, I personally think that this proposal is far too complex for us to approve tonight and we can afford to. My suggestion would be that we set up a working party to actually investigate very, very carefully all the options connected with this, with this move, because there are a number of things that need to be investigated financially and many other things as well. So before making a definite decision, I personally think that a working party should be set up.
I understand that to be part of.
No, that was after we go forward. I don't think we should vote for it, I think we should vote for setting up a party to actually investigate thoroughly all the options and all the interfaces connected with this move.
If I major, part one does say subject to building, planning and finance, you could add the word in principle, I think.
Otherwise, it's not going to go forward. Anything? Okay. Right, so can we, the proposal on the table is, do you want to add in principle, so that it's flexible?
I don't actually want to.
No, I would second the proposal that Alan made, that word in principle. And the reason I'm going to second it, the working party, which consists of two councillors, is already voted for, the document, which has already had extensive debate, and the strength of dissatisfaction of some of the councillors is evident, but the council needs to be forward on this. I will second that and let's hope we can go to a vote.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so we have a proposal on the table, seconded by Adam. Can I have a vote for those in favour of that proposal?
Against?
We call it, please.
Three.
Yes, I'll record it.
Chair, can I ask members of the public not to make comments about our decision making?
Okay.
Wasn't speaking to you.
Please.
I'm sorry, Chairman, he's very busy.
Okay, excellent.
Yes, you are.
Okay, so we have, can we just leave that debate for another time, please?
It's the best thing this council's ever done.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't.
Yes, you can.
I've got so many conversations going on, I can't deal with it.
Good.
Yes.
I know, sorry. I would like to say, though, that the council should acknowledge that the councillor Joyce and councillor Stubb did put in the report, and I do appreciate that there was a lot of effort put into it.
Yes.
And I know that, you know, that some councillors aren't happy, but we do recognise that they've put in the report and it was comprehensive, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Would you like that comment?
I think it should be recognised that the working party put in the report.
I absolutely agree with you, and, you know, to be perfectly honest, I'm walking away from here with a different decision to what I thought, but that's the point of debate and discussion, so hopefully we can move forward and progress that as quickly as possible. As an outside of that, we do need obviously to, pick up.
This gentleman hasn't got any paperwork, I don't know what we can do about it. Sorry, I've got my just.
My apologies, it shouldn't have been provided to us. We need to have big communication with the fitness centre people. But it's, it's not actually on the agenda, is it? We need to, I'll come back to that later. Okay. So moving on to item nine, which is the invoice from Light for the Christmas lights. Now, I do know that Adam Scott has been in touch with the company and has something to say on that subject, so.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. What it is, is that obviously Christmas is now finished, I guess anybody had noticed, or I missed pines earlier, I might have. Over Christmas, I managed to get the Christmas tree taken down in the new year, we had an incident in Jow Street, which some people aware of, we'd had some lights taken down by a vehicle. I've been in touch with Light about taking down of the rest of the lights, and in view of some of the issues raised in this report, I was going to propose that this is deferred to the next council meeting, because I'm going to be speaking to Light again, where I'm going to be talking to them about what they're going to do when they take down the lights and actually getting their viewpoint on it. So I haven't got the information, so I'll ask, I propose we defer this so that I can bring that information back to the next council meeting at the end of this month. And I'll explain to Paul in an email, but it'll be, they're paying this, it's deferred until the end of the month.
Okay, so the proposal, I mean, I put this together just in light of the fact, in light, the fact that we'd had an invoice, but just so that we're in possession of all the facts before we decide how we proceed with that, Adam is obviously maybe proposing that we defer this to the next council meeting, so that we will have all the information on the table.
And that will be in parks and planning on the end of the month, as opposed to the fourth, I think.
Can I?
Those deferments actually incur any extra expense because we've not paid the invoice, like some people do, who don't pay by the fourteenth or whatever. It doesn't say anything like that on the invoice.
I don't know, I'm not aware of it.
I think we're in dispute with the company, aren't we?
Yes, we are.
So we're in dispute with the company, and obviously we're not going to pay until we're quite happy that we've got the right response.
I just don't want to go wrong.
Fair enough.
I was just going to say, I'll second that motion, that Adam put forward.
Yes. Does anybody else want to make any comments regarding that? Can I have a vote on that, please? All those in favour of deferring this subject to that's important, so that's you now.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I think that's the correct decision. Okay, that brings us on to, gosh, we've got lots of big things left discussed tonight, haven't we? To the skate park. Principally, it's to decide on the supplier of the skate park, that we're going to, for the replacement of the one that's in foots close, which is fully commencing the end of its lifespan. Alan, I think you've got some pictures, haven't you? Some better pictures than we have in our photocopies. I don't know where you want to say.
Chairman, I have four copies of each design, if you've got me to put one each side of the table.
Okay, it'd be nice if the members of the public could get a little look at that, too.
Could you put us on, go on.
On the red top, red top, are the dots significant?
The dots are where the children, I mean, one child a dot each. That's what, one child, one dot, is a bit harsh, isn't it? And they then place them on their chosen designs.
Ah.
And they then place them on their chosen designs, so it gives them implication as you look at them.
So, did you, sorry, did you do that down at the skate park?
No, I borrowed all of the year five, six children from Oakham County, from my school.
That's good.
Two guys on the chair, right. Chair, the report is as it is, but there are a couple of updates.
Just have a meeting, please, gentlemen.
There are a couple of updates. Essentially, the report that we're putting in an initial project application, we're awaiting the response, that has moved on. The initial project application is approved to go forward for a full submission. The report states that the deadline is the 20th of January, that has now changed to the 30th of January. I hope we will make the decision tonight. If there's any more information required, figure that aside, we could defer to weeks away, if you really need to. We could complete all of the application and put the actual figures and whatever in advance, if you need to. The decision will be made by that panel on the 3rd of March, but I should say, it is heavily oversubscribed, not everyone will be getting the money they're expecting, whether they do that by not approving all schemes or by reducing the amount to a number of schemes, I don't know, I'm not on that panel, I was asked to, but obviously I couldn't go on, for obvious reasons. On the large images in front of you, in the top right hand corner, is on each one, in a circle, is the number of young people that prefer that one, so you can see which one they prefer. Since then, I've met, informed me with 12 teenagers, basically in the town, and shown to them, it was the most of the five against, it wasn't best weather, and that is shown underneath. Five preferred the concrete one, seven preferred the evolution one, none of them wanted the one that the young children want.
What, um, it was difficult to quantify, I turned a percentage of, you've just got a few of those, and then largely the younger children.
It is a little bit difficult, because obviously a multiple thing down, and that's why I say you could defer for two, if you wish to, I'm not sure it would make much difference. I think the young children chose the design with lots of things on it.
Yes, yes.
Which we might be worried about, because they're all up to date, probably going to be replacing.
On that subject, can I just mention that when we... When the original, this skate park was put in, there was originally a park, wasn't there? Which was taken out.
Yes, it was.
Either because it was unpopular or dangerous, or...
It failed, aren't failed, isn't it?
It failed.
Yeah.
Yes, I do tend to agree.
So it may be worth thinking, remembering back to that as well.
Yes, what you can see on that is that it's sort of misleading, I think, it looks very long, and actually it isn't, it's the same dimensions as the existing skate park. Now, the important thing about that one, the Calum Monster one, is that, well, I think it's called a half bike, or whatever, at the end, you know, there was a big bit with the running at the top, is only about 2.4 metres wide, so it's nothing like as wide as the existing one. So the bit where some teenagers sit, and have their music machine and their drinks, and showing off with the girls at the bottom, whilst people still are going up and down on bikes and scooters, that would be about half the width of the existing one, to make room for some of these other kids. So I'm not necessarily convinced, having gone through consultation with DMG, I'm not necessarily convinced it's the best option, that the biggest difference was between having a concrete one and having a non-concrete one. And people just, the young people just were not interested in riding on concrete. I'm not sure I should say anything else, other than to say that any decision, perhaps you'd have a decision subject to funding, so we don't commit ourselves to doing something without having the funding in place. I'll try and answer any questions, if anyone has any, but apart from that, I'll leave it to what people want.
Taylor wants the concrete, the metal. You say the concrete is the least popular.
Yes, Chair, I think the concrete is the least popular because they don't wear the safety equipment. We can tell them that they should wear it, but actually they don't wear it, apart from serious state, as that serious skate park. The one I thought wasn't, is actually the same surface that we have now, the one that is the galvanised metallic with coated in gravitex paint, with every adhesive and adhesive panel as we go.
I mean, my only thought on that is that the, part of the problem has been the fact it's this wooden structure that hasn't had the longevity. But, I'm not an expert on skate parks, so, can I open it up for comments, please?
Can I ask a question? You can't not answer it.
One second. Can I just, I know it's out of normal practice, but as the gentleman has commented, the guy is...
Yes, she said the wooden structure is not, you know, it's not solid anymore. Wouldn't it be better to repair it and try it in metal? They're all cheaper.
Okay, reasonable comment. I think we have undertaken quite a lot of repairs, I'm not sure, I mean, as I say, the materials it's made of is...
With Chair, Chair...
...not the best one.
But the new ones will have a steel frame behind them, certainly important in skate like, so, I believe it's just the seven years age or whatever.
Joyce, I wanted to make a comment, I mean...
I'm no skateboarder, not at my age. To my mind, that is so boring, there's nothing else to do on it, whereas we have grind benches. I was, the question I was going to ask, these grind benches, how tall are they, do we know? Because that would serve a purpose. For those who ever rent with Open Times last week, there was a man there doing step ups on a bench, on a community bench, and I looked at the bench and I thought, well, that's not what you should be using, you should be using something like that, to keep fit, you know, or steps, or something, but not, not a public...
Yeah.
The answer is 4.3 metres, Chair.
Oh, come on, what's happening there? I thought it was fat short.
I thought that's fine.
Oh, I just, I could use that.
Could you further comment on that additional facilities within it? I have, I don't, I wouldn't like to narrow that platform area, because I think that is a very popular part of the structure as it is at the moment. I have been asked by the local police, that when considering facilities for children or young adults, if you want to call them, that part of the problem is, you can see these people on bikes here, and one of the issues they have in Coots Close currently is that the bikes are used, bikes and the benches are used for the urban riding, I think that's what it's called. What? Um, but so, I think there may be some benefit to having something like that in the system, so that we, you know, we're multipurpose rather than just the bike, but again, I'm not an expert on those activities.
Having been at the council wall a long time ago, um, sorry, personally, what you said about the bikes is absolutely correct, if we've got something in a centralised place, you will actually bring people into it, rather than, we'll find a wall that may be listed in town, we will do our jumping and whatever, off the wall, it's onto concrete, it's onto various hard surfaces, that actually is going to cause a problem, whereas this, I think, you will actually draw people in. I think that's a more centralised point, and it gives you a lot more activities to do.
There must have to be some compromise around the size and width of the quarter pipe, as it's called. Okay, so the decision is on which style, really, you want to propose. The costs, the costs are fairly equal, aren't they, for all of them, there's not a great difference in cost. And they're all around the £40,000, I'll put that, I don't know, pop in my head, £40,000. £45,000, well, £50,000, that's what I've got. And are we applying, what percentage of that money are we putting in a bid for? All of it?
We have, we have £7,500 ourselves, £2,000 from the Memorial Institute, if I have the right expression, so the percentage, I don't know what happened, we're looking for about 70% or something, if anyone has a calculator.
So, do we have a proposal for this style? Or any comments, or any... Would you like your own colour dot? To make preference, Al?
Yeah, can I just ask, Alan, what was the, what was the main interest to everybody at school, in which one?
This one.
Monster Calum. Far, far away.
I'll find the percentage.
Seventy percent, yeah.
Okay, so that's not that... Not that implication of preference, is it?
I didn't find it memorable.
So...
So, I propose the, we can go with the Monster.
Monster Calum.
Yeah.
If anybody, I'll second that, I have to second that, I think that just meets more of the requirements. Can I have a vote on the, we'll just call it the Monster. Can we have, so that is proposed by John, seconded by myself, can I have a vote on who would... Mark, there you go, you, yes. Well done, good debate, thank you.
You're going to put on my Sunday, I don't want that to be read up.
Thanks for Alan putting all this together.
Yes, oh, yes, okay, thank you very much, you worked really hard, it's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Chair, I'll take it as a subjective finance.
Okay.
I'm going to try and stand you on it.
Yeah.
As well, I'll point you to that.
So that brings us to item number 11, which is the CCTV, which is your home, Alan. Centre stage, yeah, I've been working hard, haven't I?
Nice, good job. Yes. Firstly, Chair, just to clarify, I bring the report in good faith on the understanding that if we did make a payment, it is merely through work for the County Council to the supplier and not to work for the county council itself, otherwise I could not bring the report, couldn't stand here, couldn't comment, we couldn't vote, in fact, I would probably have stood in any one. There has been a little movement since the report was published, I have seen a draft of the specification for replacing the CCTV for that token, they are suggesting a brand new unit to cover Royce's recreation ground, fit it onto a lamppost, which may need adjusting. The current thinking is that it will be high definition, colour, with infrared and movable, it would be linked wirelessly to the network, it could be monitored in Melton Mowbray, at the moment, that may move, and recording wherever the recording takes place, because another, that's a local local policing unit, which as you know is closing down, we're looking at various options for where that could go. So essentially, it's potentially good news for Oakham Town Council that its property, its assets would be covered by the network CCTV, so we didn't have to buy our own and try to monitor it and potentially record it. I make no comment as to whether it should be supported financially or not, I do however have an update, that if a request did come in, it was likely to be for annual payments of a corporate amount, rather than a one-off payment in addition to the maintenance contribution. So, if you said yes, we think it's a great idea, and we're going to put £4,000 in towards the cost of these CCTV and replacement one and Coots Close, they suggested you could pay £1,000 a year for four years. Quite how that works, I don't know, that was a suggestion, you can make of it as you will, I won't make a recommendation or vote on it. I'll try to answer any questions, but there's some things I can't say, because we don't want to know which cameras sometimes don't work, we don't want that in the public domain, but if there are any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay, I mean, my thoughts on, I mean, I'm very pro CCTV if it's working well, and it's, it's looked at, and in light of the reduced active policing in the area, it may be beneficial in terms of crime prevention or identifying those committing crimes, but I think I personally want some reassurance that that's, they're being used effectively, because I believe that we haven't had a huge amount of input from the Mowbray group of being looking at CCTV over the last few years. That may change, and that may be a plan to change, but they're just my comments on it. Can I open it up to the table for debate as to whether we're prepared to commit some money towards improving the CCTV coverage across Oakham?
All right, an observation? CCTV, not... It's, as I recall, we had a councillor that was on the CCTV, great young people.
Yeah, picture.
Some of the figures, they'll stack up for me, I think that we are being asked to subsidise a falling police numbers in the county. I also believe that when there have been occasions where there have been instances on High Street where these movable cameras have been placed, they've been looking at the wrong direction, or they haven't actually recorded, or they've not been good enough focused to capture all the evidential material needed for a conviction, because if it's not clear, the police will not get a conviction, I've heard that time and time again. So I feel that it's, there's not enough full information from, maybe it's about, but there's not enough information coming from the people that probably want us to have this put in. I know that the cameras are currently monitored in Melton Police Station, because that's what it says on lock, and I'm trying to communicate with the people that do that, and they won't respond to my email, and I also know that the, at the moment, that these monitors are monitored by volunteers, police volunteers, and so, everything to me is says, is very, we're filling a stock gap and we're losing policing, and we're being asked to contribute, so we're paying a precept on a precept, if you like, we're already paying for a police amount of money, help me to last year, please. And the bit that really sticks a bit is where they've put down a figure of £3,000 to £5,000 per unit, which I presume is per camera on a lamppost or whatever, we've had £40,000 worth, £40,000 worth of cameras put in at the site in our business, in my civilian employment, and that equated to £2,000 per camera installed on a parking stool. So, to me, it sounds quite good funding, £2,000 over four years, £4,000 for one camera, but I think we might be being hoodwinked, personally. Sorry, I'll vote against it.
Yes.
Can I just ask, councillor Wallace, have you checked whether this comes under the 1016 agreement?
Yes, I suspect the reason that they have made the suggestion in that pack is so that there is no conflict between using section 106 of the community safety money to initially put it in and us contributing to it, so that effectively the £1,000 per annum would go towards, at the end of the day, ongoing replacement and renewal. If I could just say, Chair, there is always the potential to take this for noting and then invite...
If I could just say, there is always the potential to take this for noting and then invite officers from Wuthering County Council to come and assist.
WOTM is providing seven and a half million pounds for the town, of which I understand Community Safety is part of that. I'm not look to see whether it is actually covered those cameras. And I'm just wondering if our money's been helped to divert elsewhere. Or sort of three thousand pounds, you know?
Chairman, I do know there are three options for this system. I do know the ballpark figures for them, but they're not in the paper.
And of course, anything is obviously in our own account. We already give two thousand pounds a year to CCTV. And I'm not saying that we don't benefit from it, but I'll echo the point. There's been occasions when the police have had to refer to CCTV on the town. It's been proven to be ineffective or evidentially of worthwhile, so it still doesn't work. But well done the idea that we get the council.
I don't think we have enough information here to make an absolute decision. And therefore, I would take the proposal that we ask the councillor to come and give us further information regarding their plans, the funding, the ongoing costs, et cetera, in relation to this topic. We certainly don't have enough information here to give a definitive decision. So that's my proposal, that we...
I'm certain of that.
Chair, there's one other thing if I may.
So, yes.
We are aware that, and I know we don't want to state how many of which ones, but the frequency of these cameras actually not working. I've actually got a friend who works in that office, police office in Melton, so I know a little bit about it. What I was going to say was, I think we should have a report on the cameras if we put in money towards it, have our own cameras. We need to know that they are, A, are working, and we need to know that they are being monitored and that they are pointed in the right direction. And the only information that we can get to prove that is from the police office in Melton.
Would it just be helpful if I said that the specification does include the locations, types of cameras, and that field of coverage? So I could ask officers if that could be shared with councillors? And that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think we need more information, exactly what it's going to provide, what the costs are, what the ongoing costs, what those costs actually contribute to. And we'll ask them to come and talk to us effectively about that. Okay, so that's my proposal, which is seconded. Can I have a vote for those in favour of that way forward? Thank you very much. You can sit back now. The Freedom of Entry, which is planned for 2015. Adam, this is today, it's your...
Yeah, this is, I know this has been bouncing around a little bit, to my eyes. And I think we missed a point in December where we could have potentially been appointing a working group to see about getting this progressed. The reason it's come up now is that, obviously, we spoke about it last year. Going back to what I said at the beginning of the meeting, each year, the commemoration now is going to have an annual, it's going to be an annual church service, and this is a nationwide recognised event for the commemoration. The reason it comes relevant now is that Robert Boyle, who's obviously the man in charge of this, and has approached the council and asked about Freedom of Entry, has said that, because he's on the W21 Committee as well, has said that this year in Oakham and in Rutland, the church service as part of the national commemoration was going to be combined with this Freedom of Entry if the council green-lighted. So it actually keeps down some of the administration, and it's a very busy year for the church anyway. He'd also spoken to the Bishop of Leicester, because he's having to anticipate, because that's what soldiers do best, they anticipate at all levels. It's the Battle of Bristol, isn't it?
It also did.
Battle of Bristol, yeah. That's exactly. So anticipating all levels, he's already spoken with permission of Count Francis de Carney with the Bishop of Leicester. And the Bishop of Leicester has green-lighted that they will be able to accommodate the state on here if the council agreed to it. And the other thing was, is that on the Freedom of Entry, because Robert Boyle has already done this before in the Wixton Town, the town of Wixton, they have a band that they will be able earmarked, and they are also available on the date that has been put forward in this document. So he's already done a lot of headwork, and that's not to put any pressures on to do it, but he wanted to make sure that when I came to the council with this document, that we were fully appraised of situation and any potential stop points. It might be an arguable point that the 14th of June is too soon, but then again, we've got four to five months to plan. I know we have a new council next year, but I'm sure, or I hope, that the majority of councillors will still be on it. So the document is as it reads, and the decisions are, if the council still agree, to appoint a working group, proceed to matter, and then to agree on the provisional date suggested by Colonel Boyle, which is Sunday the 14th of June. He has asked if I would put myself forward as one of the being-providing committee for this, for the working group, because I've already been working with it.
And how many do you require to be on that?
Well, when it's been done before, it's usually been, I think it's been the chairman of the council. It's usually been the clerk, and it's, and I think probably one other, and that's about it, tops, three from the council. And that's all it needs to be, because there's all the other bodies. There's the representative from the police, there'll be probably two representatives from County Council, and there'll be Robert Boyle himself. And possibly also the Lord Lieutenant will be involved in this as well, because he's closely linked to this and very keen to see it happen. And I don't want to preempt anything, and anybody who wishes to take offence at this, they can do so. But there is a foregone conclusion that normally our deputy mayor has become the mayor in the following year. And if we follow that stance, and hopefully Alf is, if he's willing to do that, if we get to that point and he becomes mayor next year, and because he's also done the Freedom of Entry before, very recently with the 504, I was going to suggest that probably Alf might consider coming on to this group. Even if he doesn't stay on to be mayor next year, that his experience in helping these things move forward is valuable, and wants to get a neutral ban, and that's what he's doing. And I'd also be suggesting that because the clerk is currently doing other things, the assistant clerk is given the opportunity to step into that void, because A, it gives a fresh set of eyes, but also gives the opportunity for the assistant clerk to learn an element that she may not previously been involved in. And it's part of a good development. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you very much. I certainly don't think the fact that we'll be into a new council year, or possibly new councillors, new council, should influence it, because work has to go on, and it doesn't stop just because we're...
Exactly.
...chance now, we may all change in May. Well, it's not a proposal. So...
Basically, what my proposal is, that we go to those two bits there, and I'll just send those names out loud.
Yeah. You're right to speak.
Thank you very much, Adam. It's very kind of you, but I would not wish to do it again. I've brought two Freedom of Entrys. I think the council now has a really format for doing this. Indeed, it's been done twice before, and it should be quite easy to follow it through. So this time, I'd like to say thank you very much, but no thank you. And wish all the world with it. If you want to bend my ear any time, I'll be available, but I would want to be directly involved. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Well, I wasn't going to add courtesy. No, it wasn't. And I looked at the file, you want to write the files, we've got three very good comprehensive files in there, which you all ticked off, so thank you very much.
As Che, and as you've pointed out that previously Chairman would be heavily involved in the Freedom of Entry, I'm more than happy to do part of that group, should people feel that was suitable to be. Was obviously heavily involved in the one this year, and so I'm aware of what needs to happen. So...
Well, if there's no other comments, the proposal is, is that the decisions are that, A, we appoint a working group that would consist of myself, the deputy, Farah Allison, and the chairman, Jane Woodcock. And then to agree that provisional date, which is being suggested by Colonel Boyle, is Sunday the 14th of June. So that's the proposal.
Is also more of a date, can we look fairly quickly to focus the mind on that?
Yeah, we're still five minutes.
So you could...
Chair, without standing just quick, if you want to ask Alison whether she can...
That's true. It's a bribery. Is that a yes or a no? I think that's a thank you, Lee, yes.
I'll second that.
Yes, it was a vote, yes.
Sorry, are all those in favour of that arrangement? That's you, yes.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, we now have item thirteen, which is the appointment of a membership to planning subcommittee. This group is in need of further membership following the declared resignation of one of our councillors who was on that side of the group. Which will have a copy of the letter. I mean, I was, I did originally put myself forward to be part of that subcommittee when it was formed, but was unable to attend a meeting because they were daytime meetings. I do work from home now, so I can get more volume, that should, I think you feel that's appropriate. But obviously, it's open to the council. Does anybody have an interest in planning in particular? Part especially as a subject, I think it's an area that you need to have an interest in if you wish to join that group. Don't all jump at once.
We're already on.
Who is that?
I am, sweetie.
Can I ask, so, please?
If it's permitted from Madam General, I would like to put myself forward.
I'll second that.
Thank you. With a vested interest in various different hats, I'd be very interested to join that subcommittee.
Okay.
I'll give an answer for the change, Chair.
Well, how many people do you...
Four.
Four?
Yeah, we need four.
We need four?
We need four, we need one more.
We need one more? So...
We've got four.
You've got, you've got enough, I'm sure, James.
I'm quite happy to let Vince take that forward if you would, and I'm quite happy to propose you to that. I'll just commit myself to something else, but can we have...
Yes, I will second Vince's desire to join the group.
No, no, I think it's... We would need to organise, there is a sort of training and some time that needs to be committed in order to be able to do that. I think the committee as it stands had some training problem in County Council, did it not? So we need to get that arranged ASAP really, because of the shortage on that group. Are you happy to take part?
Yeah, more than happy, providing, you know, you understand that I work two and a half months in advance. So on all the dates concerned, I can plan it into my work roster.
And are you able to attend daytime?
Daytime, yeah, if I'm not actually loaded on to shift, then I can be available.
And you can provide that roster?
Yeah, I can, well, I can tailor the roster to suit.
Okay, so the proposals, we have Vince.
I'll second it.
Seconded, yeah. Can we have a vote on that? Happy for Vince to join the group? Fantastic, well done. There you go. Okay, and finally, but certainly not least, we come to the budget. We do have to make some serious decisions on this this evening, as to whether to... So we'd like to just go through the items. We are required by the end of this week...
Yeah, Martin.
...to inform Wuthering County Council whether we wish to increase the precept demand or not. So that decision does need to be made tonight, based on comments related to the project. Open to the table really for discussion, a couple of things I'd probably want to identify. Joyce?
No, I'm just looking at you. Go on.
I think the first one is the salary increase, which actually the national payroll increase is one percent, I believe, Alison, is that right?
Yeah.
Because it was a proposal for two points, a suggestion, because it wasn't known at the point that this was put together. But it's not, it's not that much, is it?
It's a hundred pounds lap rate plus a percentage, which may bring it up to two point two on an annual basis.
Oh, does it? Right.
I don't know, I'm a councillor. That may be the reason why I put two point two.
I don't think you have the information in relation to that. But that is just one consideration. But I mean, you know, as we all know, possibly can be moved around, and we do have to make sure we've got provisions, because I think should that sort of contingency be like, should that be the final increase? And that, of course, is set nationally, it's not something that we have any influence over. So rent, decision regarding rent may change. We are taking up the option of moving our premises, in which case we will have, we probably need to leave an element in for certainly for the forthcoming months to cover all the rent that we will need to pay up until our vacation.
Well, I'm waiting on, we're tired for you a lot, yeah. Talking, even if we terminate after, we're still tired to let spend money. So anyway, it's...
So, we're, that's fine, okay. I'll come back to grants, because I think grants just probably need some debate. Please, put in, I'm only going through what I've, I've last had to discuss on this the other day. I'm a little bit concerned about the Open Promotion Working Group. I know we talked about this amount some time ago, but I just wonder if you're selling yourself short. In light of the fact that in previous years, you know, just the summer concerts and the promotions working group added together, is that going to be sufficient?
Well, the actual two thirteen, two fourteen is for two nine eight, so it's less than five thousand.
So... Was that including the summer concerts?
Yeah.
I just don't want you to...
Yeah, summer concerts were two five, weren't they? That's just over six and a bit.
Right. So I'm just worried that, you know, you haven't got any contingency there. There is talk about increasing the, although it's not for debate this evening, but there is talk about increasing the practical concerts in the cuts close.
I think we've done some, 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 oh, very well, we've done an extra one in, haven't we? Put an extra one in. But then there is, I don't know where the bonting part comes into promotion.
The bonting was going to come out of this year's budget.
Ah, thank you.
That's what Richard had said when he was here, so...
I mean, if you're comfortably, if I'm comfortable with that amount...
Because we need more bonting.
Then, that's fine, it was just...
Yeah, I think that even if we just made it match the previous year, it would only be seven hundred pounds, and it's, I think that we can have that.
Is that assuming that you're going to be doing the same as last year? Or are you going to be increasing it? If you do increase it, then you need to have more funds.
We're doing pretty much the same class.
That's fine, I mean, if you're comfortable with the amount, then that's okay. Because obviously, every increase, that's something else has to come down. So, you know, it swings around that.
It's flexible because of the grants, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just point out, there's only two others working on this group?
Again? Well, that needs to come back to the table.
No, we've worked down more.
So that needs to come back to the table for more membership, doesn't it? So, you're happy with that?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I think we can make it fit.
Okay. The scape part is Reed, isn't it? We've got that within our...
We knew it was a council for grant, can't we?
Let's go on.
That's all right.
Freedom of entry?
I've spoken to Richard about this, I'm sure. And this, I don't think we've spent the amount that they thought they would, although we did in the two, last one. So naturally, I guess fifteen hundred in theory was going to be more than that. So.
I think it's dependent on whether what the letters should, they should.
Just for me, if we're out there, if we're going to go with the budget, then the rest has to be talked about by then.
I think you felt that the previous ones had cost around the two thousand.
That's right. The first one was St George's Barr, so that two two, I remember rightly. I think last year's with five oh four squadron was just below two. Yeah. But five oh four squadron and St George's provided the reception afterwards. Whether, whether we can do that, I'm not, I'm not sure. But. Well, we have already spoke about it. Yeah, if you have got that.
What's fine. Okay, just, it's just to highlight it as a possible shortfall. They were the key ones that I picked out. Had anybody else got anything on that list that they feel needs to be discussed before this group? Joyce?
I think we're on the funding street on Park Furniture. Now, Park has always said that there was no such thing as a rolling programme. I have spoken to a previous clerk and two previous mayors, and there's always been a rolling programme of replacing these concrete seats in the town. I don't mean replacing them because they're broken. We are supposed to be doing a rolling programme of seats to replace the concrete ones. Now, we've done them outside the qualification church, we've done them top end of JR Street. This end, the high street end wants replacing and there's, I think there's two on, by the workers, right? So I don't know how much they are, but I would like it noted that it has always been a rolling programme of these seats until they are all done. Thank you.
Okay, and we have increased the budget on that. Sorry?
What's the effect of that then?
Are you, yeah, are you, we have got, we have double, there is a double. It has increased, but sorry, increased by a thousand.
I was just wondering, Joyce, if you're making that proposal, what effects it's going to have on that four thousand?
Budget.
I'm saying it is good because it's double what it was last time.
Street furniture? Sort of playing. Oh, yeah, four thousand. Well, that is probably all right. Just, sorry.
About a thousand pounds.
Yes, does that include, street furniture does that include repairs as well? I suppose it must be, mustn't it? And painting the street furniture and all that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I actually only stood on my feet to say it because I want to reiterate once again that there is a rolling programme.
Okay, you, you could also have a four thousand pound.
I didn't understand that.
Yeah, there's somebody who wasn't. Sorry?
I didn't understand what Joyce is saying.
Right. Okay, because within that more flexibility pot, if you like, was around the grants, but it doesn't appear we're making any alterations within the project. Alan, have you got?
I've got two things really. One is a request just to clarify how grants now work. Because I can only remember it from five years ago. We had this amazing, whatever it was, let's say it was eight thousand pounds there. We invited people to apply and within a few weeks, it dished all out. Then there's no money left. Is there another way of doing it? So we actually have grants left. I don't know what the cultural consideration is. So I see the life, we'll do it then. I noticed Christmas decorations increased to seventeen thousand pounds to further improve. I presume that if some kind of working group entirely take that entire project piece and start again from scratch, and that that's just a theoretical figure.
Yeah, the Christmas lights is obviously something that we need to discuss and we will, that will be coming back to the table. Clearly, we have to deal with the situations it stands at the moment and then look to the future. But the whole contract is up for review. So we need money in the coffers, so to speak, to try and, you know, really get this town Christmas lights improved. What more can I say?
You might want to just reiterate that, but tonight we're just discussing money, not really the process for applying for grants. That's all.
I think the grounds, we can review the grant process. It's whether, are you suggesting that we shouldn't have money for grants? Or are you happy with the money that's, I mean?
I hear exactly what you're saying, Chair. And I hear what Mr Dewey says as well. I think the answer to your question is if we're just going to invite a few people, they apply for, they always have the grant, or they have some free picture and we give them the money and it just disappears, then I wouldn't be in agreement with it. So it sort of makes it difficult. If we have a better process, make it fair and keep it in the pot for people actually need it when they need it, rather than just being a source of funding, then I do feel about it.
I think it's an absolute fair comment and I think we do need to look at our processes in terms of application of the grant, applications for grants and the, the grant. So if we could leave it within, it's, it's a pot of money that we can then, you know, we're not making a decision about who gets it round in this, around this technical term. So it's there should we decide to pursue that round process again for the next, during the next project. The most important thing, sorry, did you want to say? So the most, so really the budget as it has been laid out by Rob Guthrie is acceptable. What we do need to make a decision on is whether we want to increase our demand for preset for the next financial year. We have to make that decision today because we have to inform working county council by the end of this week. We have no indication whether the working council are putting up the hand accounts at the council tax. So we don't have an indication of that to guide us. However, my personal thoughts on this, the town is building, it's getting bigger. We're having more and more people coming into the town and obviously they don't want to access facilities and make use of our entertainments, should I say. So my personal thought is that we should make it increase preset to further our, our financial pot. But that's open to suggestion. That's just my, my thoughts.
What amount?
I have suggested amounts here.
What, what?
Sorry, say again. I didn't get that.
We don't get another, we don't get another opportunity, do we? And I, I mean, I don't know.
What percent would you say?
One, one percent.
Right, sorry.
Which is the figures represented here.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Alan.
Alan.
It's a pity Rob isn't here. Perhaps Mr Dewey knows the answer. I thought the increase per property was for a zero increase in preset as it were.
That's what it says on the document. That's what it says on the spreadsheet.
Did I misread that then? Thinking that that would be.
It's written at the bottom. Is it, is it one point four percent increase per property is preset for zero increase?
Due to a lower number of properties.
That's what it says. There's no palpable reason for.
Oh, I see. Sorry. Then I misunderstood that. And so, hands off, my mistake there.
Chair, if I could.
I did get a little bit confused about reducing numbers of properties in band D, but I understand it's a balance between an increase in some higher grade properties and a decrease in lower grade, not grade, but lower banded properties. And that's, that gives you a, is it not?
No.
I don't pretend to understand it. So we've had a net gain of nine banned D properties over the year. We've had a net loss of seventeen exemption properties, I think it is, and there's six empty properties. And there's nine single occupancy properties, and also two disabled, which come off the total. I don't pretend to understand this, but it comes down to the net loss of thirty nine properties. And that's the net profit.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so Chair, if, if your proposal was to increase the preset, which is a slightly
different thing, or the total amount of money that we seek from our residents, I would be minded to agree with you for two reasons. I think we have more things that we're going to be wanting to do in coming years and we need to prepare for it. And secondly, because if we leave it and never increase, never increase it, and at the end we want to do something, we will only be able to put it up by one point nine nine percent and we won't be able to do the job we want to do at that point. So if what you meant to do is to propose increasing the preset by one point five percent or whatever, at the bottom line, increasing in that total amount of money we raise from residents, I'd be minded to support you. And that is a slightly different thing.
Gosh. I'm not an accountant. So any further comments or thoughts on?
Am I right, Chair? I'm not sure if I heard that it's something like fifty eight pence a year for each resident, each property, right?
Yes, it's not.
Yeah. Fifty three pence.
It's not, that's it.
Sorry, Chair, I just want to differ. The proposal's still on the table, but we're here differently.
I still believe that we should propose an increase in the preset in order to ensure that we have increasingly formed the reasons that Alan pointed out, that we do have other projects probably in the, in the pipeline that are likely to add, add costs to our.
So.
So, well, the percentage, though, I'm a little bit confused. I might be perfectly honest. But I'm not quite sure how you calculate it.
I'm not reading that. I thought probably put it down as if the budget, the actual two thirteen fourteen for band D was fifty two sixty six. Its original budget, two fourteen, two fifteen, fifty two sixty six. And then it goes, if we, if we agree to this one point four, which is about seventy four people a household, is fifty three forty based on a band D. So I believe that if this one point four appears to be where we'll be making no more money, but if we do the one point four, we might be standing still because of the changes in some of the ratings. I think that's my interpretation. So that's why, I think that's why I've put that column like that. So the one point four percent increase is.
Kids is at, kids is at the same level with the, the numbers of band D.
Yeah. So that's why we're agreeing, the decision is to agree the budget and the consequent preset demand because even though it is one point four percent, it's equated to seventy four B based on the previous year. So that's what I'm really, that's my interpretation.
And that actually makes it very clear. Thank you very much.
You can. I did all that with Ken and Ron, can't we?
So my proposal is then that we.
We'll drop before.
That we go with, we go with this budget as it's set, which includes a one point four percent increase to enable.
Yeah. And that's a little second. But Alan's going to change it.
Chair, the preset that you wish to increase is a two hundred and one thousand one hundred and five pounds, not the amount per property which is missing in the figure.
So you put one point four percent on that. That's huge.
Well, not divided by the number, no.
But we're still, the proposal is still to increase the preset by one point four on to.
Or whatever you wish. It's your proposal, Chair.
My proposal is to increase the preset by one point four percent because I believe we need an increased funding.
Which just happens to be the same figure as another figure in a different colour.
So you're agreeing the budget, so two thousand fifty six and increase preset to four point four.
Yes. Well, that is my proposal. Do I have a seconded for that?
Do you answer to that?
John, can I have a vote, see if they're.
Show hands.
Well done.
Gosh. Do you know, I need to go back to, I need to go to an accountant's school.
A man of arms to council.
We can, because he's worked really hard on that together.
It has.
Yes, yeah. And we, can we give him a ring on if he doesn't?
He's got a recovery for the day, hasn't he, hasn't he?
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to look at the schedules of payments, which is item fifteen? Are there any concerns, comments?
No.
I propose acceptance.
Everybody happy? Okay, so that's proposal, seconded from our, all those in favour?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And the same for statements of accounts. I can't see anything in.
I propose acceptance.
Okay. Seconded by Vince. All those in favour? Okay, thank you very much, everybody. That brings our meeting this evening to an end at is twenty forty six. I'm never going to be. Just about five minutes in everybody's attention just before you leave. So I would appreciate that. Thank you.